...
Congratulations to the flag, United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We now proceed for the action of all the committees. She's four years old, the nomination is the chairman.
I nominate Deborah Jett Harris as chairman.
I second.
I nominate Gary Pivo.
Okay. We have two nominations on the floor. The chair will recognize in first motion. Which those people who are, can we have a second?
Yes, I second.
You seconded the first nomination. We need a second on the second nomination.
You don't do a second nomination. This is a motion. We now have a motion on the floor that has to be acted on before there's a second.
Yes. So the first motion is on the floor. You have a nomination of Mr. Deborah Jett Harris, the chair. This time, we proceed for the vote for that nomination. All of us in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
One, two, three, four. Okay. We have four votes, and we have one, two, three, four, five, six. That is for joy. So, congratulations.
Thank you.
And we now move to the position of secretary. Is your nomination?
I'll nominate Nancy Calow.
I'll second it.
Okay.
I'll second the motion. Sorry. For Mrs. Calow.
Okay. We have that. Okay. All of us in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
One, two, three, four. All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I need the gavel.
I don't see a gavel.
There is a gavel right there.
There is, okay. It is okay. Thank you. Hello, everyone. My name is Deborah Jett Harris. I would like to first off thank the commissioners and thank everyone for voting for me and having the faith in this very important task to take on as chairman of zoning. I take it very seriously, and I appreciate everyone's support. I would like to start off to welcome everyone that's here. Thank you very much for coming and attending the meeting. And I would also too like to congratulate Nancy for being the secretary. Thank you very much for that. We're going to do roll call now, and Deborah Jett Harris, I'm here. Norm Peck.
Here.
Denise Markovitz.
Here.
Michael Foley.
Yes.
Nancy Calow.
Here.
Gary Pivo.
Here.
Jay Ginsburg.
Mark Peterson.
Here.
And Sarah Susko.
Jay is now on the Board of Finance.
Yeah, Jay is on another, he hasn't given, has, Bill, do you know if he's given his resignation? Because Jay?
He has not yet given his vote today.
Okay. So Jay got elected on the Board of Finance, in case people do not know, full-time.
He may not be aware that he has to resign.
Right.
I think he's aware. He just hasn't done it yet.
Okay. All right, so the next thing that we'd like to do is public delegations. Public delegations is a time when members of the public are invited to speak to the Commission on Subject Matters that are not on the agenda. Would anybody like to speak? Sure, come on up. And would you please, yes, would you please give us your name and your address?
Sure. My name is Lisa McGowan. I live at 33 Spinnaker. I'm mainly here to support the Pollinator Pathway Initiative, and hopefully with Marjorie's guidance, get it in my neighborhood, Spinnaker. So we all, I don't know if everybody knows, we all sort of jointly own the land, and then we have our own private standing homes on that land. So that's something that I hope to do. And then I'd also like to address the board about the meeting on November 2nd, when Nick Menepace was attempted to speak, and he was gavelled down as being out of order. And I hope that the current board members will consider the fact that they represent the town of East Lime, and act courteously and professionally. Further, I feel that Deb Jett Harris, and Anne Thurlow, who's not here anymore, I think they owe Nick Menepace and the citizens of East Lime an apology, and I hope that could happen. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else? Nick?
Hello. Nick Menepace, 38 Hope Street. I just wanted to congratulate the new members of the board. Obviously, we have three people up here who have new positions, or newly elected positions on the board. I just want to congratulate you all, and I hope that you guys have the best of luck in your term, and that, well, I know that all of you have the right ideas for what you want to do that's best for this town, and I make sure, I know that you're people who listen to the community. I hope you continue to do so. Thank you.
Thank you, Nick. Is there anyone else that would like to say anything? Well, okay, we'll move to the next item on the agenda, which I would like to introduce Mr. Mark Zamarka, who is Town Attorney, and he is going to give us some wonderful information and insight, things that we need to know, the new members, as well as a refresher for the current members that have already been on the commission.
Thank you, Madam Chair. As you noted, my name is Mark Zamarka. I'm with the Town Attorney's Office. Every couple of years, especially when there are, is a turnover in membership, our office gives sort of a zoning 101 overview. This is just intended to be a general overview of your role and your duties as members of the zoning commission, sort of the 10,000-foot view framework you can apply when you're actually considering applications that are before you. In Connecticut, the zoning commission is a creature of statute and has only those powers granted to it by the legislature. The power to zone land comes from General Statute, Section 8.2, which allows the zoning commission such as yourselves to regulate the height, size, and locations of building and structures, percentage of area of lot that can be occupied, size of lots, and most important, the use of land, buildings, and structures. Three main functions of a zoning commission are, one, to enact and amend zoning regulations, one of which is, I think two of which actually are before you tonight. Two is changing the zoning of property in a municipality. And three is acting on applications for special permits, site plans, and other zoning-related permits. The zoning commission can initiate amendments to the regulations or zone changes by themselves, but most of the time that activity comes from applications submitted to the East Lime Land Use Department. As you see, the commission consists of six members and two alternates. Alternates are seated only if a regular member is unable to attend. As you've also just seen, there are two officers to a zoning commission, the chair, Ms. Jett Harris, whose main function is to run the meetings and public hearings, and the secretary, Ms. Calow, who will assist in those functions. Now, when an application is received by the East Lime Land Use Department, from the date of receipt, which is something you'll also see later tonight, a statutory time clock starts running. That's pursuant to Section 8-7D of the General Statutes. The date of submission is generally held to be the next regularly scheduled zoning meeting. So for example, if an application was received in the Land Use Department last week, the date of receipt would be tonight. That was when that time clock would start. Now, there are some timelines that do have to be followed, and there's a very important reason why. First, from the date of submission, you have 65 days to open the public hearing. That 65 days allows the zoning department to get, to send it out for review by other agencies. Once the public hearing is opened, it has to conclude within 35 days. And once the public hearing is closed, you then have 65 days to make your decision. Now, the applicant can grant extensions of any of these timeframes, but it can total no more than 65 additional days. It's important for a couple of reasons. One, only the applicant, under Connecticut law, can grant an extension. Normally, if there's something that needs to be done and the commission needs more time or more information, the applicant will generally agree, but it is the rule that only the applicant can grant the extension. The most important thing with these timelines is that the failure to act within the allotted timeline. So say, for example, you've used all your, you've used all your extensions, public hearing has ended, you have 65 days to make your decision, and for whatever reason, the decision's not made within 65 days. Then by operation of law, the application is approved, something known as inferred approval. So one thing we are very, very conscious of in land use is, are these statutory timeframes. Now, public hearing, which you'll also have tonight, generally, this is where the applicant and their representatives, their attorneys, engineers, architects, they will present the application by a testimony and the submission of documents, maps, exhibits, things of that nature. Traditionally, the applicant goes first because it is their application, they're the ones seeking the permit, so they are allowed to go first. Members of the public, since it is a public hearing, are also allowed to speak, whether they are for, against, or neutral to the application. They're also allowed to address the commission and submit any evidence they feel may be pertinent. The applicant then finishes, once the public hearing is winding down, again, the applicant goes first, they go last, they get the first say, they get the last say, they're the ones with the skin in the game. Now during the public hearing, the commission does have the right to question the applicant or their representatives. Usually, just to keep things orderly, that's done through the chair. The questions go through the chair, the chair then asks the questions. The main purpose of the public hearing is to allow the applicant, as I noted, to present their case, and make their record, and allow input also from members of the public. It's also a vehicle by which this commission creates a record and gathers facts, and so to help you decide whether or not to approve, or deny, or conditionally approve the application. The overriding concept with a public hearing is procedural due process and the fundamental fairness of that process. You want to give everybody sufficient time, especially the applicant, to present their application, and any members of the public who wish to speak on it. Now, sometimes members of commissions, not just the zoning commission, can be disqualified from a certain application. Again, this goes back to the fundamental fairness. Generally, a member is either disqualified, or we hope the member would recuse themselves, based on one of two things. First is predetermination or bias. This is pretty nebulous, as you can imagine, but if, for some reason, as a sitting member of a commission, there is some reason you feel you cannot fairly and impartially decide on the application in front of you, for whatever reason, the proper thing to do would be to recuse yourself, and an alternate will be seated. The second one that does come up sometimes is a conflict of interest. This can be personal or financial. Personal could be a relationship with an applicant or an application, for some reason that could be seen as impeding the member's judgment to make a decision. Financial, you know, speaks for itself, you know, the member has a potential financial stake in the outcome of the application. The best course is, if it looks like there is a potential question as to whether or not a member of this or any commission could have a conflict of interest, our recommendation is that member recuse themselves voluntarily. It's just to avoid the appearance of impropriety. There is one other issue that does come up sometimes with individual members, and that's if that member has particular expertise, whether by education or experience regarding an application or matter before the commission. Connecticut law states that that must be disclosed during the public hearing, so that that applicant has the opportunity to investigate further, to see whether or not that there is, there is anything that they feel could potentially impact their application. This did come up in East Lime a couple of years ago. There was a member at that time of the Inland Wetlands Agency who I believe was an environmental scientist. There was an application before the agency, her, or her, I don't, I don't know whether it was a female member of the commission, actually, I shouldn't say that. The agency member did not disclose their education or experience, the fact that they were an environmental scientist. It came up after the public hearing, so that's something we had to deal with at that time. So if for any reason there is any special education or expertise that could impact the application or the decision on that, the best course of action is just to disclose that at the beginning of the public hearing. Now, in terms of decision-making, as I noted, once the public hearing is closed, you have 65 days to make your decision. We obviously encourage a thorough review of the application, and a discussion and debate before reaching the decision. Now, you can only consider evidence and testimony that has been entered into the record at the public hearing. That is a basic tenet of land use and administrative law, and if you refer to, or discuss, or in any way base a decision on evidence that's outside the record, the entire decision can be called into question and potentially invalidate the decision on appeal. Only members who have either sat for the entire public hearing in person, or who have afterwards reviewed the transcript and familiarized themselves with the record, can participate in the decision. Now, this does happen fairly often. Sometimes public hearings will go two or three sessions, and sometimes a member can't be there. That doesn't mean you can't participate in the decision. All it means is, in the interim, you have to go down to the Land Use Office, listen to the tape of the public hearing that you missed, review the exhibits, and then note that on the record at the next, at the next session. On review, land use appeal, or land use applications are subject to appeals. If, for example, it's denied, the applicant often files an appeal. Sometimes, if an application is approved, members of the public who feel that they are aggrieved appeal. Those are appealed to the Connecticut Superior Court, in this case, for the Judicial District of New London. On review, the court reviews the zoning commission's decision to see if it's supported by substantial evidence in the record. Again, this is getting somewhat into the weeds, this is just to give you an overview. Substantial evidence is defined as any evidence that affords a substantial basis of fact from which the fact in issue can be reasonably inferred. In other words, is it more likely than not that the fact is proven by the evidence in the record? Our office often drafts detailed resolutions when the situation warrants, that sets forth the reasons for the commission's decision. It's always a good idea to state the reasons, whether it's for an approval or a denial on the record. It's required by Connecticut law, and frankly, it makes things easier in the case of an appeal. Now, the last thing, and something that you might not know, is that because you are a member of a municipal board, that is defined as a public agency under the Freedom of Information Act in the state of Connecticut. I know Mr. Foley knows this very well. This means you are subject to the Freedom of Information Act. The FOIA has two basic purposes. One is to allow access to public records, and the other is to ensure the open public meetings. FOI defines a public record as information relating to the conduct of the public's business prepared, owned, used, received, or retained by a public agency. The basic premise is that everything in town hall is a public record, subject to any applicable exclusions, exceptions, or exemptions. Now, a document includes electronic communications. Welcome to the age of cell phones and iPads. Anything created as part of your work as a member of the board or commission, even if that exists on a private cellphone or private email account, is considered a public record and is subject to FOI. Now, it's important to keep public and private separate, and try not to use public, or private devices, pardon me, for public work. We also encourage every board member, not just this board, every board and commission in town, not to conduct group texts, group chats, that have anything to do with any substantive business before the commission. That can be and has been held by the Freedom of Information Commission to be an illegal public meeting. If there are any texts, emails, going back and forth, it should be just purely for administrative purposes. Here's the agenda, who can, who can attend the meeting, we're changing the meeting, things of that nature. One final thing is, sometimes you can go into executive session. That's when you are allowed to discuss, usually with staff, Mr. Mahalan, someone from our office, matters that can be discussed without members of the public present. There are many, many bases in the Freedom of Information Act to go into executive session. For purposes of this commission, that usually falls under the heading of pending litigation. If there is, if there is a matter on appeal, and our office feels that there is something that the commission needs to be updated on, or perhaps there is a potential settlement, that matter is discussed in executive session. So as I say, this is just a very, very basic overview. There are, as you can imagine, and as many of you know, a whole lot of things that go into being a member of a zoning commission, and frankly, the specifics are best discussed in the context of whatever particular application is in front of you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Zamarka. Anybody have any questions from the commission?
I do have a question. When we were at, going through the Connecticut Land Use Seminar last year, we discussed, it was discussed about alternates asking questions during public hearings, and only during public hearings. Apparently, that's allowed on other commissions. We don't allow that. Is that something we can or should allow?
I don't know that we ever have or have not allowed it. I honestly don't recall whether that's ever come up, Ms. Markovitz.
Yeah, it was.
We can certainly let you know.
It's in the bylaws.
It's in the, well, yeah, it's in our bylaws that they don't speak, but I'm just saying, I want to know what the legal.
Well, again, if it's, if it's in the bylaws, the bylaws control. If there's some reason that that should not be, we can certainly look into it and possibly have to, possibly amend the bylaws.
I'll look it up, because I do have it.
Okay, sure.
May I ask a question?
Certainly.
I think the question is, can the bylaws be amended?
Yes, yes.
Do you understand?
Yes.
And so my question is, what can or can't we talk to one another outside of meetings about?
Anything, any substantive business of the commission should not be discussed in a group setting, okay? So a quorum is four of the six. So anytime there is a group, a group email, a group text, it should not involve any substantive business of the commission.
Email or text. What about phone calls?
Same thing.
Or face-to-face conversations?
I'm sorry?
Or face-to-face conversations?
Face-to-face is one thing. Again, you just have to be conscious of the fact that as a member of a public agency, you're subject to FOI, and if there's four of you involved, if there's four of you gathered under any circumstance, and you're discussing substantive business of the commission, that can be considered an illegal meeting.
Okay, thank you. And what about caucuses? They're not, they're defined in FOIA as not, under the definition of meetings, that excludes caucuses of, including any members of the same political party, and it could be including, even if it's a quorum, they're allowed to meet?
Yes.
Isn't that the case? Yeah, so that, those kind of conversations can?
Well, again, it's better practice not to. It's better practice to conduct the business of the commission during meetings of the commission.
Okay, thank you.
I have a, want to get a clarification on communication outside of the public here for subjects on the agenda, or to be on an agenda. If a board member wants to speak to one other person by phone outside to convince this other person to vote in a certain way.
Sure.
That's not a quorum.
That's correct.
Then the same person goes to another person on the zoning board, and then down the line. I always felt that any discussion about anything on the agenda among zoning board members is not allowed.
Again, as I stated to Mr. Pivo, it's better practice to conduct the business of the commission during scheduled meetings of the commission. This is a small town, everybody runs into everybody else at some point or another, but it is, it is a better practice, and one we would certainly recommend, that you don't get into the substance of anything that's before the commission outside of the bounds of a meeting.
If there's something on the agenda for the next meeting, and one of the board members is promoting a certain decision, going down the line one at a time, we come to the zoning board, and boom, decision made quick. To me, that is not right, nor is it legal, and it's making a decision prior to a public hearing, being predisposed, decision already made prior to public hearing, or prior to a decision. I know in some towns, I won't name any names, that's done. I always thought totally wrong against freedom of information.
I wouldn't disagree with you, Mr. Peck. Certainly, as we discussed, anything that could lead to predetermination or bias should be, should be stayed away from. I would certainly, certainly urge every member to go into every application with an open mind, to, to take in and analyze whatever information comes in during the public hearing, and make your decision based on that and how it applies to the regulations.
Thank you.
One last question? So I get all this with respect to applications. Now, let's just say we want to have a conversation about, what are your priorities for the zoning commission in the coming year? Oh, I want to work on open space, and we should try to put in place some incentives to encourage developers to, you know, do a great job of designing their open space. What about you? Well, I care a lot about affordable housing. Well, you know, conversation like that. Is that forbidden?
Again, any, if there, if there are four of the six of you.
Not four, just two.
Again, the FOI is concerned, this is, this would be an open meetings matter, and it's concerned with a meeting of a quorum of a municipal agency.
So if it's not a quorum, you're going to have that kind of conversation?
Again, I wouldn't necessarily recommend it. It's better to conduct the agency's business during agency meetings, but yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Zamarka. So now we'll move into the public hearing. The first one that we have is the application of the East Lime Zoning Commission for a text amendment to the East Lime zoning regulations to amend Section 24, Site Plan Review Requirements by adding subsections 24.6E-1. So.
I'm sure you have memo for me, you have memo I can read for the plan.
I will have the secretary read them, which is what we do. So I'm going to help you.
Where am I starting?
Okay, so you would start here, and read this, and then you have to read all of this. If you get too tired, I'm willing to help, because there's lots of, three of them that we're going to have to read. So if you need help, I'm, Denise sometimes has offered to help to read.
Thank you, because I'm going to need it.
Okay.
This past July, the commission was the beneficiary of a brief presentation by Marjorie Miehoff of the 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization known as the Pollinator Pathway East Lime, PPEL, regarding the use of native plants in our community. It was suggested that the board may want to address this subject by addressing our zoning regulations. As a result of Mrs. Miehoff's presentation, the commission chair, Ms. Thurlow, asked that I would review our site plan regulations and develop an enhanced landscape regulation that would address the use of invasive plantings in this new commercial developments. Based on this directive, I offered the following text amendment to the landscaping standards in the Site Plan Regulation, Section 24 of the zoning code. It is specifically proposed to amend Section 24.6E, landscaping and buffers, by adding to the following sections. Rename Section E landscaping standards to modify the section to read landscaping and buffers. The purpose of this section is to provide standards for landscaping. The purpose of this section is to provide standards for landscaping street trees, fences, and walls. Together, these elements contribute to the visual quality, environmental health, and the character of the community. Trees provide climate control through shading during warmer months and wind screening during winters. Trees and other plants create green spaces in the developments which provide separation for pedestrians and traffic and contribute to the character of such development. It is also proposed to amend this section by adding the following subsections to 24.6E. 24.6E 1.1, non-invasive, non-native invasive and invasive plant species listed on the Connecticut Invasive Plant List shall not be used in the landscape plan for any new development or redevelopment of property under these regulations. 24.6E 1.1.2, native plants shall be used in all landscape plans. A native plant is defined as one that lives and grows naturally in a particular region without a direct or indirect human intervention and is indigenous to the Northeast. 26.6E 1.1.3, landscape plans shall provide, excuse me, landscape plans shall facilitate greenways and planting to support local flora, fauna, including pollinators. 24.6F, maintenance and replacement. All structure and areas contained within all approved site plans shall be maintained. All plantings, including shrubs, lawns, trees, evergreen trees, and ground coverings such as mulch beds that are delineated on an approved site plan shall be maintained. Such items may not be modified or altered without the approval of the appropriate zoning authority, either the commission or its agent. Plants contained within a landscape buffer area are designed to provide visual separation and screening of developments, shall not be removed or trimmed as to the limit of their natural growth unless authorized by the zoning authority, either by the commission or its agent. If such plantings become diseased or die, they shall be replaced by the end of the next planting cycle with a plant of similar type and size. Undergo from buffer areas, if natural, shall not be removed or trimmed unless authorized by the commission or its agent. Failure to maintain any landscape area or buffer shall consist of, or shall constitute a violation of the regulations. These may be exempt in the event of a catastrophic event such as a major storm, which necessitates immediate removal or trimming limbing. 24.6G, outdoor lighting. All applications requiring a site plan pursuant to Section 24 of the regulations shall include the following. All outdoor lighting shall be designed, located, installed, and directed in such a manner as to prevent objectionable light trespass and glare at property lines and disabling glare at any location on or off the property. Lighting design levels and patterns as are recommended in the Illuminating Engineering Society of North America, IES Lighting Design Handbook, latest edition, shall be allowed and a photovoltaic lighting plan submitted showing the following. The location, height, and type of all outdoor lighting fixtures, including building-mounted wall packs, light poles, and others. Two, the luminaire manufacturer's specification date, including lumen output and photometric date, showing the cutoff angles. Three, the type of fixture, metal halide, compact fluorescent, high-pressure sodium light emitting diode, or LED. Four, the lumens plan shall delineate average lighting on the site, maximum and minimum lighting levels as expressed in foot candles at ground level. Five, a statement and copies of appropriate IES standards for the proposed use of demonstrating that proposed lighting levels are consistent with the recommended IES standards. Six, all lighting for parking and pedestrian areas, including wall-mounted lighting, shall be full cutoff-type fixtures. Seven, lighting for flagpoles, ornamental lighting, trees, sculptures, et cetera. Buildings and aesthetics shall be shielded to prevent dark glare and/or light trespass and also shall be, as much as possible, contained to the target area. All building lightings for security aesthetics shall be full cutoff or fully shielded recessed type, not allowing any upward distribution of light. Number eight, adjacent to all residential multifamily uses on properties in the RU and SU districts, no light source shall be visible at the property line at three feet above ground level. Number nine, adjacent to business, commercial, or industrial use, the light source shall not be visible at a height greater than five feet above ground level. Ten, all street lighting installed as part of residential development shall be full cutoff-type fixtures. Eleven, canopy lights shall be recessed into the structure or to be surface-mounted, full cutoff-type fixtures. Twelve, use of metal halide, compact fluorescent light emitting diodes, LED, or high-pressure sodium lamp types is strongly encouraged. Thirteen, any lighting provided along pedestrian walkways shall provided by light bollards or other low-level lighting standards with shielded light sources and other low-intensity lighting. Fourteen, all nonessential lighting should be reduced or turned off after business hours, leaving only the necessary lighting for site security. Motion or infrared sensor lighting is encouraged. Fifteen, the height of luminaries, except streetlights in public right-of-ways, shall not exceed the height of 25 feet, including the base, except for lighting for recreational facilities. The following performance standards shall be met. A, no luminaire shall be closer than five feet from any property line. B, no lighting plan shall shed more than 1/4 or .25-foot candles beyond the property line. C, this requirement may be waived by the commission by a majority vote upon written request submitted at the time of application. 24.6H, changes to lighting plan after approval. No change to outdoor lighting fixtures, type of light source used, or location of luminaires may be made after the lighting plan has been approved. That's a typo. Until a change request, application has been submitted to the commission demonstrating that the proposed changes meet the requirements of the regulations. 24.6I, exempt lighting. The following lighting types shall be exempt from these regulations. One, temporary lighting used by police, fire, or emergency services. Two, temporary lighting needed for nighttime road construction projects. Three, lighting required and regulated by federal or state regulatory agencies. Four, traditional seasonal or special event lighting. Five, interior lighting. Six, lighting in swimming pools and other wastewater features governed by Article 680 of the National Electric Code. Seven, code-required exit signs. Eight, code-required lighting for stairs and ramps. And nine, customary exterior illumination of one-family or two-family dwelling and driveway.
Thank you. The next one that we have is from the deep memo.
Okay.
Do you want me to read it, Nancy?
Yes, please.
Okay, Denise, would you, why should we?
Sure, I'll read it.
Thank you.
Connecticut Department of Energy and Environmental Protection, Eastlime Zoning Commission, Chair William O'Holland, zoning official, P.O. Box, drawer 519, Niantic, Connecticut, November 21, 2023. Subject, Connecticut DEEP-LWRD comments on proposed zoning text amendments to Section 4.6. E regarding landscape standards. Dear Commissioners, thank you for notifying the Land and Water Resources Division of the proposed text message amendment noted above, received by mail October 26, 2023. Acting as the Commissioner's staff, our office has revised text amendments for consistency with the policies and standards of the Connecticut Coastal Management Act. The CCMA Connecticut General Statues, CGS Sections 23A 90 through 22A 112 inclusive, and finds them generally consistent. These comments are made in response to the review requirements contained in the CGS Section 22A-104E, which requires that any zoning regulations or changes thereto affecting the area within the coastal boundary shall be consistent with the policies CGSC Section 22A-92 and the criteria of subsection B of Section 22A 102 of the CCMA. Further, this section requires that notification be sent to the Commissioner of Energy and Environmental Protection at least 35 days prior to the commencement of the public hearing. Once notified, our office is responsible for reviewing the proposals, consistency with the policies of Section 22A-92, and the criteria of Section 22A-102B of the CCMA. This response does not necessarily reflect other planning and zoning considerations which may apply. Should you have any questions regarding this letter or any other coastal management matter, please feel free to contact me via email. Sincerely, Marcy Bullent, Coastal Planner, Land and Water Resources Division, Connecticut Department of Energy and Environmental Protection.
Thank you, Denise. Would you like to read the next one, or would you like me to do it? The next one is a letter from the Planning Commission memo. Is that this one? Yes. No, that's this one. I'll read it. November 28, 2023, Eastlime Zoning Commission, Town of Eastlime, zoning referral, CGS 8-3A, application of Eastlime Zoning Commission to amend Section 24 Site Plan Review Requirements by adding subsections 24.6E-1I. Sorry, it's I, it's E- I. Dear Sir or Madam, the Eastlime Planning Commission, at its meeting of November 13, 2023, found the above-referenced text amendment consistent with the 2020 Eastlime Plan of Conservation and Development. If you have any further questions regarding this letter or the POCD, please do not hesitate to contact the Director of Planning, Gary A. Gashell II, at 860-691-4105. Sincerely, Kurt Scott, Secretary, Planning Commission. He's also CC to Bill O'Holland. I don't need to read the backside of it? Okay. Okay, so, okay, so the next thing before we do that, I wanted to make sure, I should have asked first, maybe. You did run a legal ad for these, correct? Okay. So now we, this is the time that we go to the public for anybody that would like to speak for or against this text amendment? And if you, when you come up to the podium, would you please give your name and your address?
Hello, I'm Nick Menapease, 30 Hope Street. I just want to speak in favor of it. I think it's a great idea to be able to have more native plants that we have present in our community. The only thing I do want to stress as well is that, one of the things I would like them to consider, and I do apologize slightly, I think this is a great first step, and I think it's an amazing thing for the town to do. I do want to emphasize that one of the things that always concerns me as part of a shoreline community is the just sheer amount of parking that we have so close to the shore. That creates a lot of runoff, not only is that a problem for the water, but it's also a problem for our, our pollinators and all of our animals and plants that live in the area, because that much area, well, it makes it hotter in the summer, it, and it's just a death zone for anything that is trying to get around. So having some of those little areas there does help, but I think the root cause of that is just the sheer amount of, you know, I don't know if it's literally asphalt, but asphalt parking that is in those areas. I think it's a problem, and, you know, frankly, it's a little absurd when you think about it. I know we live in a city where we drive everywhere, to have this much parking that is empty almost all of the time. It does nothing for the town, it doesn't help the environment, and I just think it's something to consider when we're looking at future projects. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hello, my name is Lindsay Rush. I live at 15 Grassy Hill Road in Eastlime. As a local science educator, I was delighted to learn of the proposed amendment to Section 24.6E-1 on landscaping and buffers. I support this amendment and the use of native plants in new or redevelopment of property while eliminating the use of plants known to be invasive. In the classroom, we teach students that little actions can add up to have a large impact, and I'm proud of our town, Eastlime, for considering this step. As an educator, I also know that being specific about expectations also usually helps compliance, and I'd hope to see further language supporting a relatively high threshold for native plants use instead of the vaguer language, quote, "Native plants shall be used in all landscape plans," which to some people might mean a single native plant in a sea of non-natives. And I also wanted to point out how timely this proposed amendment is, as UMass Amherst just published a pair of papers this fall about the role of nurseries and new plantings that come from nurseries in the spread of invasive plants. Having town support for reducing invasive plant spread and promoting native plants is invaluable, especially in an area like Eastlime that's lucky to be the steward of important natural resources. Little actions add up, so thank you for considering this step in a positive direction for our town's future.
Thank you very much. Is there anybody else?
I'm getting over laryngitis. My name is Marjorie Meechoff. I live at 6 Cedar Ridge Road in Eastlime. I would like to thank the commission for your positive receptiveness in embracing these new changes to the regulations. I support the amendment, and I look forward to other progressive amendment changes we can do in the future. And thank you, Lindsay, for speaking so eloquently about all the, all the impacts that this, these new regulations will, will meet for our environment. We're not doing these changes for today or next year, we're doing these changes for 20 and 30 years down the road. As a longtime resident of Eastlime, we moved here in '79, I can see the changes that, that we've made already, and the use of invasive plants, which we now know are very, very harmful. So thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Marjorie. Is there anybody else that would like to speak? Okay, so at this time, can I please have a motion to close this public hearing?
I make a motion to close the public hearing.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. 6-0-0. Okay, so the next, we're going to go on to, at this time, our second zoning application. The application of Eastlime Zoning Commission for a text amendment to the Eastlime Zoning Regulations. It is specifically proposed to add Section 34.2.1 Flanders Village and to modify the current Section 34.3 Purpose, and by adding Section 34.6.1.1, the Flanders Village Design District.
I'm going to check your memo for me, for deep regional plans.
Yes, we do. We have, you have to read the first page and then where it's highlighted in red.
Okay.
I'll help you.
Memo to Eastlime Zoning Commission from William O'Holland, zoning official, re-proposed architectural design review regulation amendment, date September 7, 2023. This proposed text amendment to Section 34 titled Architectural Review Regulation would expand the current design review area to include the Flanders and Boston Post Road commercial areas. The intent of this amendment is to provide a similar design level review for this area as exists for the Nynek Village. While it is recognized that the character of Flanders area is different than the Nynek Village District, the existing design regulations can be readily applied. That is because the existing regulations were intentionally written to accommodate future expansion of the code into other commercial areas. While a separate set of design regulations could be developed, the existing regulations will provide a common regulatory vehicle to achieve community character throughout architectural review. It is specifically proposed to add a new Section 34.2.1 and to modify Section 34.3 Purpose, and by adding new Section 34.6.1.1, the Flanders Village Design District. These modifications are highlighted in red next to the attached proposal.
Yeah, so then you just read that one there.
34.2.1, Flanders Village is located in the northerly area of Eastlime and is unique in its own right with its own character and sense of place. This area is highly developed commercial center at the juncture of two major state arterial roads. The center contains numerous businesses which provide various, various services to the community, such as medical, grocery, retail, and a mix, or restaurants, and other businesses. There may be many strip malls and small businesses.
This one, you have to read this right here. This one, you have to read this right here. Do you want me to do it?
Please.
It's 34.3, Purpose.
The purpose of these architectural regulations are to establish design standards for new or renovated buildings that will preserve and enhance the New England character of Niantic and Flanders villages, protect a distinctive character, landscape, and historic structures within the district, provide a framework for design that draws inspiration from the traditions of Niantic and Flanders, and similarly situated New England seacoast communities, and promote the safe, functional, and attractive development of the Village District and enhance the public experience.
Thank you. And then you'll turn over the next page. This one right here? Yep, right there.
Right here. Oh. 34.6.1.1, the Flanders Village Design District. The Flanders Village Design District, FVDD, as delineated on zoning map for the Eastlime, Town of Eastlime, shall be an overlay district comprising, encompassing, excuse me, all properties in the existing commercial CA zoning district north of Gorton Pond in the intersection of Flanders Road and Laurel Hill Drive.
Okay, that's it. That's it. All right, so the next one that we have to read would be the, I missed it on that right here. Yep, the DEP. I'll read that one. Eastlime Zoning Commission, Care of William Maholland, zoning official, PO Box, drawer 519, Niantic, Connecticut, 06357. Subject: Connecticut Deep LWRD, Comments on Proposed Zoning Text Amendments to Section 34 Regarding Addition of New Flanders Village Design District. Dear Commissioners, thank you for notifying the Land and Water Resources Division, LWRD, of the proposed text amendment noted above received by mail on October 26, 2023. Acting as the Commissioner's staff, our office has reviewed the revised text amendments for consistency with the policies and standards of the Connecticut Coastal Management Act, CCMA Connecticut General Statute CGS Section 22A 90 through 22A-1 and 12, inclusive, and finds them generally consistent. These comments are made in response to the review requirement contained in the CGS Section 22A-104E, which requires that any zoning regulation or changes thereto affecting the area within the coastal boundary shall be consistent with the policies of CGS Section 22A-92 and the criteria of subsection B of subsection 22A-102 of the CCMA. Further, this section requires that notification be sent to the Commissioner of Energy and Environmental Protection at least 35 days prior to the commencement of the public hearing. Once notified, our office is responsible for reviewing the proposal's consistency with the policies of Section 22A-92 and the criteria of Section 22A-102B of the CCMA. This response does not necessarily reflect other planning and zoning considerations which may apply. Should you have any questions regarding this letter or any other coastal management matter, please feel free to contact me via email, marcy.balint@ct.gov. Sincerely, Marcy Ballint. To Eastlime Planning Commission, William Maholland, zoning official, from Gary Gashell, Director of Planning, Wetlands Enforcement Officer, November 13th, 2023, zoning referral CGS 8-3A, application of Eastlime Zoning Commission to amend Section 34.21 and to modify Section 34.3 Purpose, and by adding Section 34.6.1.1, the Flanders Village Design District. Upon review of the above referenced zoning referral with the 2020 Plan of Conservation and Development, I have the following comments. The proposed amendments would expand the current architectural design review area to include Flanders and Boston Post Road commercial area. Chapter 8 Commercial and Industrial Development, Section 8.2, Recommendations, Recommendations 8 states the following: Consider a rezone of the current Flanders commercial district on Boston Post Road from Chesterfield Road to West AS CB, or given a new designation such as Flanders Village District FVD, with regulations that encourage redevelopment to approve upon the Village concept. As in the existing CB zone, new buildings in this area should be located near the front of the parcel to emphasize both visibility for new businesses and enhancements for pedestrians and vehicles trying to access the property. Incentive-based zoning should encourage property owners to locate parking to the side or rear and abide by architectural regulations or recommendations which complement existing historic structures and area and use various landscaping alternatives to complement both the site and the structure. Therefore, it is moved that the Eastlime Planning Commission finds a proposed text amendment referenced above consistent/inconsistent with the Eastlime 2020 Plan of Conservation and Development, as the proposed amendments would approve upon the Village concept and create Flanders Village District. Would you like me to read that? Yes, please. Thank you, Denise.
On November 28th, 2023, Eastlime Zoning Commission, Town of Eastlime, PO Box 519, Pennsylvania Avenue, Niantic, rezoning referral CGS 8-3A, application of Eastlime Zoning Commission to amend Section 34.21 and to modify the Section 34.3 Purpose, and by adding Section 34.6.1.1, the Flanders Village Design District. Dear Sir or Madam, the Eastlime Planning Commission at its meeting of November 13th found the above referenced text amendment consistent with the 2020 Eastlime Plan of Conservation and Development. If you have any further questions regarding this letter or the POCD, please do not hesitate to contact the Director of Planning, Gary Gashell. Sincerely, Kirk Scott, Secretary.
Thank you, Denise. This would be the time, do anybody, does anybody in the public have anything that they would like to comment on about this? Please step forward, please, and state your name and address.
My name is Daniel Glynn, G-L-Y-N-N, 103 Flanders Road. I am a licensed architect, and I grew up and live in Niantic. First, I'd like to welcome the new members on the zoning commission. I hope you will provide a more disciplined and more intelligent direction for the Town of Eastlime. Second, I am in favor of the proposed establishment of the Flanders Village Design District, similar to the Niantic Village Design District, but I support it on one condition. If you are going to make regulations, then please enforce those regulations. Two recent examples on Main Street where noncompliant projects were approved in direct violation of the regulations illustrate how town officials have failed to do their jobs when it comes to performing a thorough analysis and comparison of proposed plans against the regulations. Because of this negligence, certain developers have been given special treatment to essentially destroy the architectural fabric of downtown Niantic. First, Norton Building, which has become almost universally detested as the yellow behemoth, flagrantly violates Section 34.8 of the Architectural Design Review Regulations, which states, quote, "With the objective of maintaining a small-town character, buildings should appear to be modest in scale relating to the scale of the immediate surroundings. The Norton has an enormous flat facade and a flat roof that towers over its neighbors, and it more closely resembles the photos in Section 34 which depict, quote, 'discouraged architectural designs.'" Second, the ZDM Properties Project on Main Street, which is going to demolish the former Cafe Soul and two adjacent buildings, is even worse. Not only does it violate Section 34.8, it also flagrantly violates Section 9.3.1 pertaining to minimum lot size. Section 9.3.1 states, quote, "Lots used for mixed use shall have a minimum of 7,500 square feet plus 1,200 square feet for each efficiency and one-bedroom living unit, and 2,000 square feet for each two-bedroom living unit." By this formula, if you do the calculations, the 16,900-square-foot monstrosity being crammed onto that site requires a lot that is almost 10,000 square feet larger than it actually is. The zoning official does not dispute this error, according to the November 20th article in the day paper titled, "Development Debate in Eastlime: What Kind of Town Is It?" So if you know there is an error, please fix it. Don't triple down on the error by issuing a building permit and a certificate of occupancy for a project which you absolutely know to be in violation of the regulations. And furthermore, please don't go relying upon the flawed legal opinion by the town attorney dated July 5th, 2023, which opines that a zoning permit approval cannot be rescinded or revoked. This is absolutely wrong. First of all, the town attorney admits in their letter that they did not review the application, nor did they attend the public hearing, nor did they take a position on the allegations regarding lot size violation. If they had actually researched Section 9.3.1 and performed the mathematical calculations of building size versus lot size, they would have to concede that the proposed building is prohibited on that lot. Second, the legal case that they cite to back up their position is Val v. City of Milford, which is a ridiculous comparison, because that case was a private residence on a beach, not a mixed-use monstrosity in the middle of Main Street. The most detrimental impact of this flawed legal opinion is that it sets a precedent and gives a green light for the zoning official and zoning commission to approve any and all noncompliant projects in the future, regardless of what the regulations say, and to claim it was, quote, "an error." In the end, you might as well throw the regulations away, because zoning approval appears to be an arbitrary and capricious act. The town still has an opportunity to correct its error, in this case by denying the ZDM project a building permit and ACO. The best path forward is to sit down with the owner and reach a settlement concerning the design fees that have been incurred to date. Please do this before the architectural character of downtown Niantic is further destroyed for generations to come. Again, this law relates directly to tonight's proposal for the Flanders Village Design District. The main lesson is, if you are going to make regulations, then please enforce those regulations. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Glynn. Is there anybody else? Okay.
May I give copies?
Yes, please. That would be nice. Thank you very much. Do you have one for our recording secretary as well? Thank you. If not, I can, okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, while he's, okay, so now we need to move. Mr. Maholland, I trust that you've ran a legal ad for this?
Yes.
Okay, so can we have a motion to close this public hearing?
So.
Second?
The second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any ayes? Okay, motion carries. Okay, Mr. Maholland, number three, the application for Christopher, okay, so, now at this time we will open the regular meeting. We need to have approval of the minutes of the November 2nd, 2023 meeting. Do I have a motion to accept the minutes from the November 2nd, 2023 meeting?
Tell me who two of you that were here.
Well, I was here, so, but if somebody's read them, then they can, I'll make the first motion, because I was here. So we need, has anybody read them?
I would make a suggestion, if I could at this time, that perhaps we could have the minutes delivered before we come to the meeting, have them e-mail to us with the agenda so that we have an opportunity to review them.
You can rereel now.
Well, I didn't, I didn't get any, but I make a motion to approve.
What'd you say, Jess?
I thought usually you got that, and I apologize.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, so what do we do at this point when we don't, when we can't accept the minutes though? What's typically the proper procedure, Mr.? We table it?
We do table.
Okay, so we'll table that, and thank you, Jess, for correcting that. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Okay, so moving forward, application of Eastlime Zoning Commission for a text amendment to the Eastlime zoning regulations to amend Section 24 Site Plan Review Requirements by adding Sections 24.6 E- is that an I or an L? I, thank you. I just wanted to make sure I got it right. So at this time, we will have a discussion, the commissioners? Anybody would like to start and have a discussion about?
In reference to what?
The number, it would be the first one that we did, the pollinator pathway?
Yes. I would like to speak if I could. In reference to 24.6 E1.1.2, I think a good point was made by a member of the public concerning native, the way that this was written, "Native plants shall be used in all landscape plans." Perhaps it should be worded to say, "Only native plants shall be used in all landscape But that's just, that's my thought. I like the native plants, but I knew that, I'm pretty sure that the pollinator pathway, in order for it to be a pollinator pathway, you have to have 70% native plants, up higher? Okay. I'm for the native plants. There's a big list that people can find on the Connecticut, State of Connecticut list that they can find, and there's quite a lot of them, actually. So I like using the native plants. They serve a purpose on so many levels, and I think they're very important. So I, I like this text amendment. Oh, I do, too. I was just wondering if perhaps maybe we should put a percentage of native plants that should be used in landscape plans.
Can this be changed at this point, or does it have to be accepted or denied as it is?
Well, it doesn't have the amount, it doesn't have the percentages on here on the text amendment.
We can be, we can approve it with the changes.
Okay.
Yeah, we would have to approve it with the percentage, 100%. So do we want to go with 100%?
Just use the word exclusively.
Exclusively.
Can I ask a question before we decide that? So one of the most important aspects or values of landscaping or purposes of landscaping is to screen properties from white pollution, or for privacy purposes, or other kinds of screening purposes? And so then you often are looking for plants that provide 50% screen, 100% screen, depending on, you know, what you're trying to achieve. My question is, are there native trees that can provide 100% screen during all seasons that are available on the list that would work in this location? Because we don't want to exclude the ability to utilize them for that screening purposes. And 100% would be complicate, would complicate that if we're trying to make sure we can, there are proper screens. That's the, so does anybody know trees like, you know, evergreens, conifers from the native list that would work that way? Any thoughts?
I don't know. I guess we'd have to look at the invasive plant list.
Unfortunately, the public here is close, so we can't go back to the others, but I'm relatively certain that white pines and that sort of thing are there.
So are those good screen plants? That's my question.
I, can I make a comment?
Absolutely. This is our discussion.
Native plants that are collected specimens are not necessarily attractive, and certainly collected specimens are a hecka lot cheaper for developers than store-bought nursery-grown plants. I, I think we should prohibit the use of collected specimens.
Would they, would it be, would they be able to find the specimens that, if we did do that, would they be able to find them? Like, is there a nursery around here? Like, is there a nursery around here?
They could work at it. I have no problem making people work hard to come up with something that works for all of us. I just think it's, you know, really easy to go out and dig up a white pine up or look along Route 85. There's tons of them now that they've cleared out all those trees. It's cheap, it's easy to do, and ugly as sin. And why should we have hope to have a specimen to screen something that will never be able to meet its genetic outcome because it wasn't pruned properly to start with?
Yeah, I... I'm not sure white pine has enough density foliage to provide 100% screen anyway. So... But if does, I'm all for it, but I agree with, you know, it should be an attractive plant. And by collected, you mean literally?
Go dig it up.
Dig it up from the...
I don't know that that really happens, does it?
Well, because, you know, it's on the native list, and gee, it's grown where somebody else won't notice that it's missing, and let's use it. And I... It's important to maintain the integrity of the pathway and also the beauty that of everybody who has to look at it besides the insects.
I'm not sure that I'm aware of any developer that would actually go out and start digging up trees. I think it would be not productive for them, and certainly it might be cheaper.
Oh, big time.
But I don't think that a developer is going to go out in the woods and start digging up trees. Maybe a small, you know, maybe for your house or something. We could specify that, I'm sure, but they can't take natives from the... From the land, but they have to get them from a commercial source.
Uh, native plants are not cheap.
No.
And they're are easy to come by. It's not hard. I just think any plantings need to come from a certified pesticide-free, herbicide-free nursery, and that's what needs to be used. If we truly are interested in promoting the pollinators, I don't think I would disagree with that.
I'm sure as a suggestion, perhaps we move this forwards as it is, and then we all collect and layer individually and kind of look at what we're talking about now, because we could all come back with an amendment in like 30, 60 days, but then we think that probably collectively is... You could do a suggestion, move forward, give me an opportunity to look at that and become a little more informed about white pines and other species.
We'd be able to look at the list that's on the State of Connecticut, and I think that that would be important.
Okay, I... Excuse me. I'd like to hear from a landscape architect on this, somebody who's an actual expert on what's going to happen, because this is not a layperson's, seems to me, technical competence to know, you know, all the options for effectively utilizing native plants in the kind of professional landscape architecture that we want to see happen in the community. And so, well, I'm very sympathetic to this. I'm just worried that we're being a bit oversimplified in... And so my preference would be to not... Well, I'd rather table this to our next meeting and have a landscape architect come and consult with us about it, talk to us about it as we can.
Can't... Your public hearing is done.
There we go.
Well, then may... Can staff consult with the landscape architect, get us some memo on this?
I believe that's okay, right?
Yeah, if I get... I'll try to track one down. The question would be, do we need to hire him? And then we'll get a bunch of considerations and things like that.
Yeah.
And I don't know that we have a line item, so I would... More of that.
Yeah.
Mr. Peck, sorry, just to address your concern, you could reopen the public hearing. Nothing's been published, a decision hasn't been made. It's not the usual course of doing things, but since this is an application that stemmed from the commission in the first place, technically you could, if you wanted to reopen the public hearing.
Is there another option where you can adopt supplemental regulations that expand on, elaborate, make precise?
You can always amend regulations.
But that could be done.
Yeah.
I think I'd like that.
Now, if you went down that path, that would fit this in place, and you'd enhance a little bit of your...
Specify exactly what we mean.
And adjusted. We'd have to do the advertising, write it up, refer it out. I mean, did this, but adjusted and modifications to it in the future. Certainly, you could do that.
I'd like to see this pass. I think it's a very good start. I do have a problem with the outdoor lighting thesis here. It's... To me, it's a little overbearing. I'd like to pass the first two sections, but this one is... I think I need to write it... Read it 10 times to really determine what's going on here, but it seems like an awful lot of regulation.
I agree with Norm on that as far as the first part of it with the native plants. I like it, but I do... I do believe that the lighting part of it is really restrictive, but I do... I do support the first part of it, but I do have some issues with the... Some concerns about the lighting. So I agree with Mr. Peck.
Isn't this just consistent with the IES recommendations for controlling light pollution at night?
Mm-hmm.
That's a national standard, is it not?
Yes.
It's being adopted by communities all over the country, is it not?
And you can... If you're looking at dark skies, that could be very extensive. You could talk 15 pages in that through your regulations. I don't think we're in that position. This is intended to clarify for these developments that we see that are a little larger, should somebody bring one forth so that we can really ensure that we're all on the same page. We know now what the height of the standards are going to be, et cetera, et cetera, and because we can find that they can be any height and affects the light pollution, et cetera, et cetera. And this is becoming a national trend, actually an international trend. But certainly, you all would be decided, right, for this community and what is not collectively?
In the past, we've... I think we've done pretty well with lighting. I haven't heard complaints, I don't think. This is... Really narrows it down to pretty definite. We've been able to work with applicants, developers, builders, depending on the site, depending on the neighbors. This takes away that flexibility, I think. I'd like to feel better working with somebody back and forth, getting it suited to a certain location.
It sounds like you're headed towards not passing this. I mean, you want changes to the flat section. We don't want to pass the lighting section at all. That seems kind of a confused way to pass amendments to the zoning regulations. I think we're headed towards a no on this.
If I may? If we were to continue this, I could redraft this if the commission chooses to exclude the lighting section, and then you could just work out with... With starting satellite, if collectively I'm interested in... And make it a little easier for you as a group to digest.
Yeah, rather than blow it up altogether, if that makes more sense, that's probably what I'd go.
What about a motion just to pass the first two sections? The plant section, which we're mainly concerned with.
And what, review the lighting in the future?
And drop the lighting.
Can I ask what the actual specific part of the lighting regulations are that are giving us problems? Because again, these are not particular... I don't read anything here that's particularly onerous. It's simply asking for contemporary, modern, dark sky standards to be adopted that are necessary for the health of wildlife and birds and reduce light pollution. It's something that's a policy the governor has been supporting. They're now having all the state buildings turn their lights off at night. This would be very good also for energy conservation. You know, we're at the precipice of another great extinction caused by climate change. This will help with respect to energy conservation. I just don't see how this is extreme, and I'd just like to, you know, what exactly it is, other than its length, that is giving pause. I mean, I wouldn't mind splitting the motion or continuing this part and bringing it back for further conversation so the members can have time to, you know, digest it, have questions answered about it, but this, you know, these full-toed compact fixtures, they're very standard now. Using compact fluorescent or LED, it's very standard and much more energy efficient now, and so forth.
Yeah, I would tend to agree with Gary about that.
In the interest of getting something done with this, I'd like to make a motion that we pass the landscaping section of this amendment, 24.6E, 24.6F, and that we visit... Revisit the lighting at a later time.
I'll second that motion.
Can I ask for an amendment to that? I'd like to move an amendment to that, which is that we pass the first two sections that you were referring to, and because I'd like to make another motion to pass the second, the part on lighting, and see if that passes rather than just making the deferral of that as part of the first motion. I think that would need a second.
Well, technically, there is a motion on the floor that's been seconded. If Mr. Peck would like to amend his motion, that's up to him, but if not, the motion on the floor needs to be voted out.
I don't believe that's correct. I think a motion to amend is a superior motion to the... To the motion on the table.
It's Mr. Peck's motion if he decides he wants to amend it. That's fine.
Mr. Peck, would you...
No, it's not. Once it's motion... Once it's moved and it's seconded, it's the commission's motion. It's no longer Mr. Peck's motion under Robert's rules. And so we can choose as a commission to make a motion and second that motion to amend that. That's the correct interpretation.
Or we could ask, Mr. Peck, would you be interested in tweaking your motion?
No.
No.
Yes, but, excuse me, point of order, that is not the rule under Robert's rules. It's no longer... Once the motion is made by a person and seconded, it is no longer that person's motion. It's now basically owned by the commission.
Mr. Zamarka?
My understanding is the motion on the floor needs to be voted out.
Okay, then that's what we're going to do. So...
I... Please look that up and give us your advice on that. I'm quite sure you're incorrect.
So at this time, we're going to follow Mr. Zamarka as a legal advice, and we're going to vote.
Robert's rules is not a law. It's not a law. We're not looking for legal advice.
You didn't get a second anyway.
I seconded it.
David said it's...
Not on the amendment.
On norms, I seconded it.
Right, but there was no second on Mr. Peck's amendment, so it's... All this discussion is moot at this point.
Can we move to reopen the public hearing and continue it, or is that done?
No.
No. I'd just hate to see us give up this opportunity to have this pollinator path, the... All this that's been presented to us tonight. Perhaps we should go forward with norms, suggestion, and then revisit the lighting because I think that's important. Maybe we could take it up as a second public hearing after we can do some research.
I have no objection to tweaking the lighting situation. This seems a bit too much.
Well, we still haven't, you know, Dr. Rush brought up the percentage of plants. We still haven't determined that, if we want to include that in the regulation.
That's a small enough change. I think that could be amended later. I think it would be useful to... While we're still discussing norms, motion, but I'd be in favor of accepting as written the first section regarding...
The landscaping part?
Yes.
Okay. So we have a motion on the floor?
Yes. So what's the motion?
To pass, to approve 24.6E and 24.6F only, and to later, at some point, revisit the outdoor lighting section. Work on that later.
Okay, do we have a second? I seconded it, okay. Well, he tweaked it, so I wanted to make sure.
I didn't tweak it.
So I second it. So all in favor, say aye. Aye. So we have how many ayes? Four? So it's four. Nays? Okay. Four, two, zero. The next one on the list... He withdrew it. So the next one on the list is we have the application of East Lime Zoning Commission for a text amendment to the East Lime zoning regulations. It's specifically proposed to add Section 34.2.1, Flanders Village, and to modify the current Section 34.3 purpose and by adding Section 34.6.1.1, the Flanders Village Design District. So can we have a discussion about that?
I'm generally in favor of adding that. I do think we do have to take Mr. Glenn and his advice into consideration as we go forward with applications in both of those districts.
Can I ask a question?
Certainly.
Do we have a vehicle to change our minds once an application is approved?
Once an amendment is approved?
No.
No.
Okay.
I think it can work really well in preserving the character of the north end of town as well as the south end of town, and perhaps we haven't done as good a job as we could, but I think we can moving forward, so I'm generally in favor.
I'm in favor of it, too, because a lot of... There's been a lot of public concerns and a lot of public opinion that they would like the north end of town to have a little bit more aesthetically pleasing features added to it. So I would be... I like this. I would be for this. It would give it a more village, you know, district design... Design district, which is, you know, even though it's a highly commercial area, but I think that we can also make it look, you know, prettier, nicer.
Unfortunately, we probably should have done this 30 years ago, but it certainly doesn't hurt. It will help going forward. I would like to make a motion to approve the application of the East Lime Zoning Commission to amend Section 34.21 and to modify 34.3 purpose and by adding 34.6.1.1, the village... and by adding thirty-four point six point one point one, the Village, the Flanders Village Design District.
I second that.
I have a question. It's, I'm looking for the section pertaining to the architectural design consultant, this that I'm familiar with in the...
Thirty-four.
Yeah, is this the language from thirty-four that we're looking at here, or is this...
The same, it's section two, it's exactly the same, with the exception of the referrals in the Flanders Four Quonet area.
Yeah, so that's...
So that is, it is what's in here.
I'm, I'm looking for that section pertaining to the architectural consultant, and I don't see it in the document that you gave us, and, and so maybe the document you gave us doesn't have the entire...
I think it's intended to be.
Yeah, I don't, I just want to make sure it doesn't get...
Get lost.
...deleted from the code somehow.
I agree.
That would be chapter thirty-four, yeah?
Yep.
Yep.
That's a very good point.
It's thirty-four eleven two one, so it's eleven two one, I'm going to look at, that's what I saw in the code, thirty-four...
Eleven two.
Two one, yeah.
Maybe it's not...
So really, everything after, okay, wait, down here deeper, two one. Okay, it is, it is in here, one page.
Application.
It is in the document you gave me.
It's two sixty-eight.
So pertaining to that, do we have a village architectural design consultant that is an individual we turn to?
No, but over time, I've talked to a few, we certainly don't have one on call, we don't have a line item to pay in per se as we start to move to this particular area, which is relatively new to this division of the Green, so that's a process that we need to address and that we need essentially be talking probably to a few architects and finding out if somebody would consider being a consultant, the commission should probably choose, so that's something we can now pursue if we move this forward, and I will make, do some outreach and then I will respond back to you if we can go from there if that's appropriate.
Yes, I think that's very important and...
Well, we need to set that up now.
Yeah, and, and, yeah, for both this Flanders District as well as for the Main Street Downtown District. Yeah. Do we, do we need a budget for that?
They want to get paid.
Yeah.
And we're going to get to that probably at our next meeting, stuff and line items, which you'll have an opportunity to suggest adding funding for something like that, there is a line item for consultants that's been vacant for a year or two.
Well, we left, we had a motion and a second.
Oh, yes.
Yep, so, we had a motion and a second, so, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, motion carries, six zero zero.
And I'm sure that would be effective for, published next Thursday, effective on Friday.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear what you said.
Published next Thursday, the legal act, and will be effective on Friday, as well as the previous amendment that you passed.
Thank you. Okay, now we move on to old business, there is none, we have new business, under new business, it's, number one, we have application of Bride Lake LLC, successor to Paz and Construction LLC, recite plan approval for the modification of the December 2020, approval of an eighty unit affordable housing, multifamily residential development pursuant to Connecticut General Statutes eight dash thirty G, increasing the total unit count to one hundred multifamily units on the westerly side of North Bridebrook Road, twenty point twenty-four acres, now bearing street number ninety-four, assessors map nine point zero, lot thirty-seven dash two. Mr. Mahoney, could you please get that on the schedule?
I will schedule that as appropriate, definitely.
Thank you. Okay, do we have any other business on the floor by the majority of the vote?
Can I ask a question about that last item too? We're going to be expected to do a site plan for that, is that right? I'm, I'm looking at our code that says no multifamily housing projects shall be altered.
This is an affordable housing application.
Yeah, yeah, I understand.
So that we will be looking at an existing affordable housing application, which is going to be a site plan and adjustment to that existing affordable housing based on the eight thirty G, so essentially a site plan adjustment, so we will form that review, I will schedule it, and there will be a presentation before the commission. Mr. Mahoney, what, is there anything you want to add to that? Thank you.
That's for the property that's on North Bridebrook?
Yeah.
Wasn't he, he's been before us before, right?
Yes.
For the ADU, obviously, because it's half built.
Yeah, so I, I don't want to get into specifics because it's not a public hearing, so I want to be sensitive to that.
Right.
Just, yeah, just for you to be curious.
He will also need to pass weapons too before they come here, so they're working on that, as that comes together, we will then schedule this for a review by the...
I'm just not familiar with any provision in either our affordable housing district or in eight thirty G that provides for an amendment to a site plan, and so that's what I'm trying to understand is what procedure we would be using to amend the site plan there, the only reference to the site plan in the AHD district is in connection with the adoption of an AHD district and not the amendment, and so...
Does that, will I ask the liaisonist a particular question?
That's, that's, that's something that will be addressed when the applicant makes his presentation, this is just, this is just a knowledge receipt of the application.
And to schedule for him, that's it.
Okay.
Okay, any other business on the floor by the majority vote of the commission?
You're asking if there's any other business, new business that could be brought up, is that what you're asking?
Well, yeah, this, we're under the new business, we're following the thing, but yeah, so if there's any business on the floor, if any, by the majority vote of the commission, so we'd have to have four members that would want to talk about it. Does anybody have anything that they would like to discuss with four of us? No? Okay. Zoning official, the handout twenty twenty-four meeting schedule, you guys should have that, does anybody have any questions about that?
And the legislation, I think is also in the package, I think we'll have that as well, you see, we got set of zoning regulations, in addition, I've got an email from our attorney, attorney Kerry, who was looking at the appeal of the affordable housing application of home service, damage from the maintenance rate, the system, and he just shot me in the mouth, saying, you know, give everybody a statement, so I'll report that to the committee further, and with that said, I am not be...
Okay, so comments from zoning board liaison to planning commission on December sec, twelve, twenty twenty-three, I believe that was Dave Schmidt that went there, but he's not here tonight, was it Dave Schmidt? I'm pretty sure it was Dave.
Excuse me?
Yes.
I have a question of the zoning official.
Okay, I'm sorry, go ahead.
He passed out the regulations amended through October twenty-first, two thousand twenty-one. I, I think there's been some amendments since then.
I believe so too, so I will go back, we'll get some time tomorrow, we'll look at that, and we're starting already to get you all in the ranks.
Should we hand these back?
I usually need to adjust that, that cover sheet.
Oh, it might be just the cover sheet.
Yeah, so let me go back and look, I'll report back in clarification and I'll send an email if necessary, so everybody's on the same page, because I can need to look at that, so thank you.
Say thank you, so, Dave Schmidt was, I believe, the one that went on December twelfth, so we're not going to get a report on that because he's not here.
Lost to cut thirty.
Okay, next to, Mr. Mahoney, do you have any correspondence?
None.
Okay, this is a part number seven, comments from the chairman, I would like to thank everyone for having patience with myself and Nancy.
I think we all hit a learning curve here.
Yeah, I know, right, and I look forward to everybody...
And I like that a lot of questions have been asked.
Yes, I think that we have a very talented bunch of people and I look forward to a very good year and to do good for the, for the town, and I think we're on the right path so far, so that's great news. So do we have a motion to adjourn?
Did you get money here from our executive?
Oh, I'm sorry, Roseanne, Roseanne, thank you, Denise.
Fortunately, it's brief, we had our first meeting and most of the meeting was taken up with filling vacancies, appointments, routine business, but I do need to add that when we did the swearing in for the chair and the secretary, that those positions also extend to the aquifer protection committee. That's it.
So the, Bill, the people that are new here, they don't have the aquifer protection?
Yeah, that will be forthcoming.
Okay, thank you.
They're good at this thing.
That's it, okay.
One thing at a time, I thought tonight might be as a new step, she keep everybody out of the way to focus and then we'll get into additional, but there's a lot to learn, a lot to power.
Okay, so do we have a motion to adjourn? Somebody, I think, made it.
Was it me, I make a motion to adjourn, Chair?
Second.
Second, okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Thank you, motion carries, six zero zero.